So Jai Bhim all of you, Jai Bhim and Namo Buddha, in with our Pali chanting. Namu tasbahagavato arahato samma sambuddhas. Namu tasbahagavato arahato samma sambuddhas. Namu tasbahagavato arahato samma sambuddhas. So actually this this class is very special to me because according to my calculation, this is our twenty fifth of the study sessions. We have covered lot of ground and lot of text and at the same time we are into the twenty fifth class today. And we we will be looking at the very, you know, the important book of the Buddha is Dhamma. The book that is of great importance to all of us and the the book was titled, the book three is titled as 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 what the Buddha taught and we are into the part three of the book. And I think this part three of the book is profoundly important for us because we have also looked into what is Dhamma. And we have covered two sections or chapters of 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 the part three. And they have been very exciting for all of us. Today we are going to look at a very special and I think important chapter in the book three and I think as Bhavasa Ambidhar said that you know the way he has defined the three categories. The category of Dhamma, the category of not Dhamma or Adhamma and the category of Sadhamma. And he has given you know of a very few interesting definitions of what is the Dhamma and we have seen two definitions of the Dhamma and and we have seen the explanation that Bhavasa Ambidhar has given. So you know the 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 first was of course to maintain purity of life is Dhamma. And last time we saw to reach perfection in life is Dhamma. So we have seen the to maintain the purity of life is the Dhamma and we have gone into the depth of it and the second chapter was about perfection in life is the Dhamma. We also looked at that quite at length in the last class that we had. Today, the class is going to be about, the the session is going to be about to live in Nibbana is Dhamma. And there are a lot of confusions over the word Nibban, what is the Nibbana? And how it is to live in Nibbana and I think this this chapter gives a very conclusive, very definitive definition of 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 what is what does it mean by Nibbana? Because Buddhism is all about Nibbana that we all are striving to attain to Nibbana. And in this in this in this in this chapter Bhavasa Ambidhar has has used like the 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 Pali text so deeply that we we begin to see as to what is the Buddhist Buddhist Nirvana or Nibbana all about. The traditionally we call it Nirvana but the Pali word is for is Nibbana. So let's begin with the 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 chapter with this brief introduction. The very first verse of this chapter three reads like this. Nothing can give real happiness as Nibbana, so said the Buddha. So according to the definition of the Nibbana, there is nothing in the world that can give real happiness. Now what is the real happiness and Bhavasa Ambidhar goes on discussing what is real happiness. But when when we look at the Dhammapad, there is a Gatha which says Nibbana Paramasukham. And 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 if we if we visit Rajagrha, there is a letter written by Bhavasa Ambidhar and he has written this total entire Gatha of Dhammapad which is verse number two zero four in Deuvanagari, he has written later to somebody where he is explaining the importance of you know his life as to he has never sought after a lot of things, you know, he was satisfied with whatever he had. And then he put up this very beautiful Gatha written in Deuvanagari script. So the entire Gatha goes like this, Arogya Paramalaba. There is no gain higher than the than the health. Santutti Paramadhnam, there is no wealth higher than contentment. Vissasaparamnyati, there is no relationship higher than the trust between the human beings. And the last of last sentence of this Gatha is Nibbanum Paramasukham. So there is no happiness, there is no Sukha higher than Nibbana. And I think this 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 Gatha explains everything that we all all human beings are striving for happiness but we don't know where our real happiness lies. And according to the Buddha's understanding of the reality, the real happiness lies in Nibbana. And that's what Bhavasa Ambidhar begins this chapter with. The very first verse of this chapter is like this, nothing can give real happiness as Nibbana, so said the Buddha. Now Bhavasa Ambidhar also further goes on and says that this is the central teaching of the Buddha. This is the central doctrine of the Buddha. Nibbana is the central teaching, central doctrine of the Buddha and and if we understand it as a center, central doctrine of the Buddha, the question arises, what is Nibbana? What is Nibbana? And then Bhavasa Ambidhar you know talks about how the Buddha has given totally a different meaning and content than what his predecessors have talked about or what his contemporary contemporaries has talked about in terms of Nibbana. So what they thought about Nibbana is the salvation of the soul. So they thought that the salvation of the soul is Nibbana. And then Bhavasa Ambidhar says that there were there are four ways in which Nibbana was conceived of. So one way of conceiving Nibbana is called Lautik, means worldly. And in the bracket Bhavasa Ambidhar has put material, eat, drink and be merry type. Okay, okay, and in the Hindi Hindi language we can say Khaupyo Ayashkarun type of Lukiya Nibbana. Second type of Nibbana is Yogic. The third conception of Nibbana is Brahmanic and the fourth is Upanishadic. Okay, there are four ways the Nibbana is being you know conceived of or conceptualized by different schools. So among the Brahmanical and the Upanishadic traditions conception of Dhamma, they involve a recognition of a soul as an independent entity. Okay, and we know that the Buddha has denied that there is nothing like soul exist anywhere in the in the entire universe. Because you know soul as an independently, a theory which the Buddha has denied, the Buddha had therefore no difficulty in rejecting the Brahmanical or Upanishadic conception of Nibbana. So Buddha has outrightly, we can say that the Buddha has dealt outrightly with the concept of Nibbana as it is found in Upanishad and the Brahmanical sort of the systems because he talks about the independent you know entity and according to the Buddha, there is nothing independent in the world, everything is interdependent, everything is conditionally coexisting. Depending on the conditions, the things arise and when those conditions disappear, the things also disappear and that's a very general formulation of what is called the Patichasamutpad. So because there is a reality of interdependence, the reality is relational, there is nothing like an independent entity anywhere in the world that we can see this is whatever is independent cannot exist. Whatever is atomized cannot exist. Because you know even the underlying reality of the world is like that, that everything is interrelational, everything is interdependent. And therefore the Buddha will not have or Buddhists should not have any problem in understanding that the Upanishadic or Brahmanic conception of Nibbana you know is 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 very easy to reject. The Lautik conception of Nibbana as we have seen, merry making, enjoying, drinking is too materialistic for the Buddha and we have seen that the Buddha has always already cautioned that this end should not be perceived, the end of indulging in the sensuality or sensual pleasures. And therefore the Buddha here talks about, you know, the he rejects the materialistic conception of what is called Nibbana according to the Lautik Lautik schools of thoughts. And the 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 yogic conception of Nibbana is also rejected by the Buddha because it is it is about a very purely temporary state. And I'm going to read it here because Bhavasa Ambidhar has put it beautifully in the verse verse number ten. The yogic conception of Nibbana was a purely temporary state. The happiness it bought was negative. It involved dissociation from the world. It avoided pain but gave no happiness. Whatever happiness it may be said to bring lasted as long as the yoga lasted. It was not permanent, it was temporary. So after you know looking at this comparative study of 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 the concept of Nibbana in the Lautik way, in 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 yogic way, in Brahmanic way and in the Upanishadic way. Let's look at what is the concept of Nibbana according to the Buddha and I think this is very profoundly important for all of us to understand the implication of this very clear definition that Bhavasa Ambidhar has given about Nibbana. So what is the Nibbana according to the Buddha? So he says, there are three ideas which underlie the conception of Nibbana according to the Buddha. And these three ideas we are going to look at very deeply. So the first idea that the Buddha has talked about here is the happiness of a sentient being as distinct from the salvation of the soul is one. So Nibbana is about the happiness of the human beings. Happiness of a sentient being, it's not about salvation of the soul. And I think this is very fundamental difference. You know whenever people talk about Buddhism, they 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 think that Buddhism is a is a pessimistic religion, it talks about dukkha, it talks about problems of life so on and so forth. But look at here, the doctrine of Nibbana smashes all those misunderstandings of of about the Buddhism. What does it say? It says that the Nibbana is about the happiness of a sentient beings. So the Buddha is not you know denying the Param Sukha, the Buddha is not denying the highest bliss or a joy. He says that the highest bliss and and joy is possible for a human being. So this Nibbana is about Param Sukha because as the Buddha says, Nibban is the highest happiness, highest bliss. And the salvation of soul as we have seen like you know the 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 meeting of the Atma and Paramatma, that's sort of a conception of Nirvan or whatever Muksha in the Brahmanic or Upanishadic tradition doesn't make sense to the Buddhists because the Buddha has found discovered that there is nothing independent, there is nothing permanent. There is nothing that we can hold on to, everything is in the flux, everything changes all the time, moment to moment. So this is the first idea. There are three ideas which underlie his conception of Nibbana of this, the happiness of a sentient being as distinct from the salvation of the soul is one. This is the one idea that we have to understand. The second idea is the happiness of the sentient being in Sansara while he is alive or while she is alive. But the idea of a soul and salvation of the soul after death are absolutely foreign to the Buddha's conception of Nibbana. Very fundamental difference, you know, like the Nibbana is achievable in this very life. You know, in this in this in this in this very world, one can attain to Nibbana. One can realize Nibbana, one can penetrate Nibbana, one can live Nibbana. Because this is what is the 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 heading of this chapter to live in Nibbana is Dhamma. You know, this is very interesting because we 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 know that Bhavasa Ambidhar has spent so much of a time in writing this book that as I say often that every single sentence matter. Look at the construction of the heading itself. You know, Bhavasa Ambidhar is not saying that to attain Nibbana is Dhamma, he says to live in Nibbana is Dhamma. Now how to live in the in in Nibbana? And when one lives in Nibbana, one has the supreme happiness. So Buddhism is a religion of happiness, Buddhism is a religion of joy, Buddhism is a is a is a philosophy that that offers Param Sukh. And 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 that's achievable here now here and now in this very life that is achievable. So that's the second underlying idea about the conception of Nibbana. The third idea which underlies the conception of Nibbana is please listen carefully, this wonderfully put by Bhavasa Ambidhar. Is the exercise of control over the flames of passion which are always on fire. The flames of passion that are always on fire within us, within all human beings, the world is on fire. And of course Bhavasa Ambidhar quotes here a very famous sutra of the Buddha called Adichchaparyayu. It's a very earlier sutta of the Buddha where the Buddha gives the fire sharman. In English this sharman that the Buddha gave can be called the fire sharman. And according to this fire sharman, the Buddha says that sabham adittam, everything is on fire. Everything is on fire and kenaginam is of what 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 fire, this word is on fire, everything is on fire. Then the Buddha gives the answer raga ginam, dosaginam, mohaginam. By the fire of raga, the fire of dosa and the fire of moha, the word is set afire, everything is burning. Everything is burning constantly. So the third idea underlying the conception of Nibbana is the exercise of control over the flames of the passions which are always on fire. Which are always on fire. And that the passions are like burning fire was the was the text of a sharman which the Buddha delivered to the bhikkus when he was staying in Gaya, this is what he said. So let's read it, what the Buddha said in the fire sharman, the Adichchaparyayu. All things of bhikkus are on fire. And what opis are all these things which are on fire, which are the things on are on fire. The eye of bhikkhu is on fire. You know, this all six senses are on fire. So you know the Buddha talks about the eye first and the Buddha talks about ear and then Buddha talks about tongue and the Buddha talks about taste, the body, the touch and the manam, chit, you know, Dhamma. Dhamma are the ideas in the mind. So let's look at the first sort of a thing, the eye of bhikkus is on fire. Form on fire, so whatever the mind gets hold of, the form outside there is on fire. Eye consciousness is on fire. Impressions means the touch, the fussa. In Pali it's called fussa, in traditional English language is fussa, contact. Impressions received by the eyes are on fire and whatever sensations because after 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 there is a touch contact, there is a savvedna which is called sensation. So the sensation are of three types, so whenever the eye come in contact with any form, any object, there are arising of either the 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 pleasant sensation or unpleasant sensation or indifferent. Sukhavedana, dukhavedana or na sukha na dukhavedana. Okay, originates in dependence on impression received by the type that also is on fire. So this all mental processes are explained by the Buddha, the eye, the the object, the contact, the eye consciousness and what happens when the contact is made. The 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 action or action that our mind gives in terms of sensation, they can be pleasant. If the 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 eye likes the object, it craves for it. If the eye doesn't like the object, it tries to pull it, we push it away. For many a times we we are just ignorant of what we are perceiving. We are just unmindful of what we are perceiving. And therefore this is a very interesting sort of a take on Patichasamutpad as well. Okay, so what the Buddha says and with what are these on fire? Why this eye is on fire, form is on fire, eye consciousness is on fire, then impression, the touch, the fussa is on fire, the the sensation vedanas are on fire. And of of which, what are these on fire? With the fire of passion. This is called ragagi, ragagni. Say I, with the fire of hatred, dosagni, doso, with the fire of infatuation means mohagni. Raga dosa mo, as a Buddhist we should commit these three words to mind. You know, raga dosa and moha. So by these three fires, the word is on fire, the eye is on fire, the object is on fire. With birth, old age, death, sorrow, lamentation, misery, grief and despair are they on fire. So this is about the first sense, you know, because we the Buddha starts talking about senses from the top. So you know the eyes rank first, then ears, then nose, then test and then bodily body contact. So it it goes like this, the ear is on fire. Sounds are on fire, the nose is on fire, orders are on fire, the tongue is on fire, taste are on fire, the body is on fire. The ideas are on fire and whatever sensation, pleasant, unpleasant or indifferent originates in dependence on impression received by the mind that also is on fire. And with what are these on fire? With the fire of passion, say I, with the fire of hatred, with the fire of infatuation, with birth, old age, death, sorrow, lamentation, misery, grief and despair are they on fire. So when a bhikkhu pursues that everything is on fire, then what happens? Perceiving this oh bhikkus, the learned and noble conceives an aversion. And in conceiving this aversion, his mind is turned back. He becomes divorcedate of passion and by the absence of passion he becomes free and when he is free, he becomes aware that he is free. Very profound sort of the insights that we can find in this in this few paragraphs. And as we go on reading further, lot of these ideas will be will be clear to us. Lot of these ideas will be so fundamentally clear to us when we when we read further. How can Nibbana give happiness? That is the next question which calls for explanation. So how 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 this Nibbana can give us happiness, the highest happiness, how can it ensure that we have this highest happiness? So verse number twenty six where Bhavasa Ambidhar goes like this, the common notion is that man is unhappy because he is in want. So that's the notion because we have so many desires, that's why we are unhappy. Because there are so many desires, we are unhappy. But this is always not true. Man is unhappy even though he is in the midst of plenty. So there are people even when they have a lot of things, they are unhappy. Why? Unhappiness is the result of greed and greed is the bane of life of those who have as well as of those who have not. So greed, hatred and delusion, rag, greed is rag. So if our mind is full of for full of greed, even if we are in the middle of plenty, we are unhappy. This the Buddha has made clear in a sharman delivered to the bhikkus in which he says, excited by greed. Raga is also called lobha. Brothers furious with anger, blinded by delusion, very important this thing because the greed excites us. So whenever we are greedy, it excites us, it stimulates us. Whenever there is dresha or anger, we are furious, we are fuming. And the delusion blinds us. Blinded by delusion, with mind overwhelmed, with mind enslaved and that's how the mind is enslaved by raga, dosa and moha. By lobha, dosa and more, the mind is enslaved. Men reflect upon their own misfortune because of their greed. Men reflect upon the misfortune others. Men experience mental suffering and anguish. If however greed, anger and delusion are done away, men reflect neither upon their own misfortune nor on mental suffering and anguish. You see how profound is this teaching that Bhavasa Ambidhar has put in this in this in this chapter. So according to Bhavasa Ambidhar, let's recapitulate, capitulate, the Nibbana is all about Param Sukha. And that Param Sukha can be experienced in this very life itself, we don't have to die to experience that. And the third conception is that the world is on fire and of what fire? The fire of you know hatred, the fire of greed and the fire of ignorance. And the cause of unhappiness is not whether we have a lot, whether we have plenty or a few things. The reason the human beings are unhappy because their minds are driven by the greed, hatred and delusion, lobha, dosa and moha. Okay, so if we are we get excited by the greed, if we get furious with anger, if we we get blinded by delusion, then what happens? We are bound to suffer. We are bound to experience unhappiness. Very beautifully put here in the verse number twenty nine by Bhavasa Ambidhar. Excited by greed, brothers furious with anger, blinded by delusion, with mind overwhelmed, with mind enslaved, men reflect upon their own misfortune, men reflect upon the misfortunes of others, men experience mental suffering and anguish. So that's how the mind is enslaved. So if we are in the in the control of 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 lobha, dosha and moha, our mind is enslaved. So if we want real freedom, if we want real happiness, we have to practice what is called a raga, a doso and a moha. And we are going to look into that. If however greed, anger and delusion are done away or transformed into their positive counterpart, men reflect neither upon their own misfortune nor on the misfortunes of others and there is no mental suffering and anguish. Thus brothers is Nibbana visible in this life and not merely in future, inviting, attractive, accessible to the wise disciple, this a disciple. So it is not that you know a particular brand of people can experience Nibbana, the Buddha says that it's 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 for a wise disciple. It's accessible, it's possible to live in Nibbana for everybody. Those who make efforts, those who try to transform their greed, hatred and delusion, happiness is possible in this very life and that happiness the Buddha defined as Nibbanan Paramasukham. The highest happiness is possible. Herein lies the explanation of what consumes man and makes him unhappy. By using this analogy of burning fire to the working of human passions, the Buddha has given the most forceful explanation for the unhappiness of man. So what makes man unhappy is the falling of prey to his passion. So if we fall a prey to greed, hatred and delusion, raga, dosa and moha or lobo dosa and moha, these passions are called fetters which prevent a man from reaching the state of Nibbana. You see how 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 clearly the path towards the Param Sukha is stated and underlined by Bhavasa Ambidhar. You know, he was very deeply read and experienced in the Buddha Dhamma. So every single sentence that we have to make sense of and apply. So if we want real happiness, if we want highest happiness, what we need to do? We have to practice giving dana. We have to practice love, loving kindness and we have to practice prajna, try to understand the way it is. That is the surest and the only path to the highest happiness. The moment he is free from the sway of his passions, he learns to achieve Nibbana, man's way to happiness is open to him. So it is not that the the way to the unhappiness is close to us, is open to us, we can experience it, we can walk into that door of happiness. These passions according to the Buddha's analysis fall under three groups as we were talking about raga, dosa and moha. The first, that which refers to all degrees of craving or attachment, anything related to craving or attachment such as lust, infatuation and greed is called lobha. In Buddhism it's called lobha, in Pali it's called lobo. That which refers to all degrees of craving or attachment such as lust, infatuation and greed. The second, that which refers to all degrees of antipathy, hatred, anger, vexation or repugnance, doso. Even there is now a definition of what is raga, dosa and moha. Third, that which refers to all degrees of ignorance, delusion, dullness and stupidity, moha or avidya. So with this with these three sort of passions, everything is burning. Our eyes are craving for something pleasant. Our ears are craving for something pleasant, all our senses are on fire. Now the verse number thirty eight, I think we have to look at it very carefully and analyze what is this verse number thirty eight. And I think this verse number thirty eight is very, very uniquely profound because you know I have never come across such an explanation of these three passions. Let's look at it very beautifully, you know. The first and the second fires relate to the emotions. So we are we are intellect as well as we are emotional beings, we are intellectual beings. We 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 develop, we do we toggle with lot of ideas, lot of concepts in our head, lot of views in our head. But at the same time, we are very emotional beings. The human beings you know are made up of you you know the bunch of the bundle of lot of emotions. So what Bhavasambhikar clearly states here and very beautifully states here is the first and second fires. For example, the fire of lobha and dvesha relate to the emotions. And over the whole scale of one's attitudes and feelings towards other beings. You see so profound, so deep and so clear a statement as to what is lobha? What is dvesh and how our suffering is related with our relationship with other human beings? Because the emotions are always about our attitude towards other human beings. The first and the second fires relate to the emotions and over the whole scale of one's attitude and feeling towards other beings. It's very deep, you know, that Buddhism is often conceived in abstract. In terms of emancipation without dealing with these emotional issues that we have. We have emotional issues with other people. What is the way out? You know, the way out is to cultivate loving kindness. The way out is to cultivate love and respect and reverence for a fellow human being. That is the surest path to the happiness. While the third fire relates to all the ideas that are in any way removed from the truth. So any idea that we carry in our heads that are removed from the truth, they are, you know, causing unhappiness. As simple as that, as clear as that. So this, 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 this passage makes us very clear about the very profound ideas that Bhavasambhikar has so beautifully simplified for us. Very beautifully simplified for us so that we can know for ourselves what is Nibbana. It's like a mathematical equation. Nibbana is like happiness, highest happiness. How do you get the highest happiness? By cultivating, you know, the opposite of raga, dosa and moh. If we have indulged into raga, dvesha and moh, we are bound to have unpleasant experiences. We are bound to have, you know, unsatisfactory experiences. But if we, if we practice on our mind, if we, if we, if we have a positive attitude towards other human beings, fellow human beings, we are happy, truly happy. When we cultivate truth, we are truly happy because we don't get swayed by, 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 you know, ignorance. So I think this is a wonderful sort of understanding that Bhavasambhikar has put in front of us. Now there is a confusion. Why there is a confusion about the word Nibbana? Because etymologically it means outblowing or extinguishing, something has blown away. That is the, you know, the etymological meaning of the word Nibbana. So taking hold of this root meaning of the word, critics have tried to make nonsense of the doctrine of Nibbana. They hold that Nibbana means extinction of all human passion which is equivalent to death. So you know, often we see that, you know, the Buddhists, 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 they express on Nibbana is conceived in dry, abstract terms. But Bhavasambhikar says, no, Nibbana is not extinction of all human passions which is equivalent to death. They how by this means tried to throw ridicule over the doctrine of Nibbana. That such is not the meaning of Nibbana is quite clear if one examines the language of the fire sermon. See, I told you lot of times that Bhavasambhikar goes into very deeper analysis of the language itself, the language of the suttas. And by dwelling deep into the suttas, he brings out the truth, the true meaning of it. So what the fire sermon says. The fire sermon does not say that life is burning and death is extinction. It says passions are on fire. The fire sermon does not say that the passions must be extinguished completely. It says do not add fuel to the flame. Do not add fuel to the flame. Secondly, the critics have failed to make a distinction between Nibbana and Parinibbana. As the udana says, Parinibbana occurs when the body becomes disintegrated. All perceptions become stopped, all sensations die away, the activity ceases and consciousness goes away. Thus Parinibbana means complete extinction. Parinirvan means complete extinction. Nibbana can never have this meaning. Nibbana means enough control over passion so as to enable one to walk on the path of righteousness. You know, if you, if we want to do anything, we need passion. But we cannot have the passions that will burn us. You know, we need enough control over the passion so that we can walk on the path of righteousness. So even to walk on the path of righteousness, we need to have control over the passion. If all the passions are extinguished, we cannot walk on the path of righteousness. We will be as good as dead human beings. It was not intended to mean anything more. That Nibbana is another name for righteous life is made clear by Buddha himself to Radha. So what is Nibbana? It's a righteous life and the righteous life is a sure recipe for happiness for the Param Sukha. Once the venerable Radha came to the exalted one, having done so, he saluted the exalted one. Sat down at one side, so seated the venerable Radha, thus addressed the exalted one, pray lord, what, what for is Nirvana? What for is Dibbana? Why do you want Nibbana? Nibbana means release from passion. Replied the lord, but Nibbana lord, what is the aim of it? Rooted in Nibbana Radha, the righteous life is lived. Nibbana is its goal. Nibbana is its end. That Nibbana does not mean extinction is also made clear by Sariputra in the following sermon. Now there is a sermon that is given by Sariputra, the leading disciple of the Buddha, who makes it very clear as to what is, what does it mean by the word, by Nibbana? So once lord was dwelling in Anath Pindakas Arama where Sariputra was also staying and the lord addressed the brethren, the Vikshusanga or Vikshinisanga said, "Allsmen be a partakers not of the world's goods but of my doctrine." So be the sharer in my doctrine. Don't be sharer in the worldly good. In my compassion for you all, I am anxious to ensure this. You know, so the highest Buddha of the, of compassion of the Buddha is to ensure that the people are experiencing that Nibbana, that fruit of righteous life. That's the ultimate sort of the gift of the Buddha and the Buddha shares that gift with us, all of us. Thus Buddha, thus spoke the lord, who thereupon rose and passed to his own cell. After saying this Buddha went to his own room. Sariputra remained behind and the brethren asked him to explain what is Nibbana. Then Sariputra in reply to the brethren said, brethren know that greed is vile, greed is bad and vile is resentment. So the greed and resentment are exchangeable. So where there is a greed, there will be hatred. If there is a hatred, there will be greed. Then Sariputra, to shed this greed and this resentment, there is the middle way which gives us eyes to see and makes us know, leading us onto path, us onto peace, insight, enlightenment and Nibbana. What is this middle way? It is not but the noble eightfold path of right out to, right aims, right speech, right action, right means of livelihood, right effort, right mindfulness and right concentration. This allsmen is the middle way. And we have seen that when Bhavasambhikar has, has compared Buddha and Karl Marx in one of his very profound papers where he said that noble eightfold path is nothing but Nibbana. So the doctrine of Nibbana is made practicable by Bhavasambhikar and so clear for all of us. Yes sir, anger is vile and malevolence is vile. Envy and jealousy are vile. Niggardliness and avarice are vile. Hypocrisy and deceit and arrogance are vile. Inflation is vile and indolence is vile. They're all bad qualities. For the shading of inflation and indolence, there is the middle way giving us eyes to see, making us know and leading us on to peace, insight, enlightenment, Nibbana which is not but that noble eightfold path. So the more we practice the noble eightfold path, the more we experience the Param Sukha. The highest happiness that is possible for the human beings. There is no other way to real happiness. Thus spoke the Reverend Sariputra, glad at heart, the alsmen rejoiced at what he had said. That the idea underlying Nibbana is that it is the path of righteousness. No one will mistake Nibbana for anything else. So much discretion, so much abstraction is going on about Nibbana. It must be like this, out of time and place and whatnot, so many concepts. About Nibbana. But you see so much, this, this, this section, this chapter makes us this very, you know, central teachings of the Buddha accessible to all of us so easily. And that's the beauty of, 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 of the Buddhane Dhamma. Complete annihilation is one extreme and Parinibbana is another extreme. Nibbana is the middle way. So understood, all confusion about Nibbana will disappear. So you see, this is how Bhavasambhikar has gone into explaining this very profound central teaching of the Buddha of Nibbana. Now, when we, when we cogitate upon it, when we think about it, the way Bhavasambhikar has taught here, you know, this Nibbana as a Param Sukha, we get an immediate cue that Buddhism is not the religion of, 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 you know, pessimism. There is no denial of the Param Sukha because Nibbana itself is a Param Sukha. Is the real happiness. And how does one, 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 one experience that real happiness? By following the noble eightfold path, by, 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 by working on one's passions, controlling passions. It's very difficult to destroy the passions. The passions cannot be destroyed. They will be always there. But those passions can be controlled and the human being can function in the world to walk on the path of righteousness. And once when a human being walks on the path of righteousness, that's about, that's like living in Nibbana and it's the Dhamma. So to live in Nibbana is the Dhamma. We have to live in Nibbana. We cannot wait to attain the Nibbana. Nibbana is not some, some kind of a state that we attend to. Nibbana is a practice. It's an action in the world. It's a compassionate action in the world. And that's why we see that, you know, the, the Buddhism is also about emotions. It's not just about intellect, intellect. Because this, this lobha and dosa is all about emotions and it's, these, these emotions has to do with other human beings. So the more we become open to other human beings, the more we become respectful to other human beings, the more we, we cultivate this loving kindness, the more we experience the high, the highest sort of a Sukha, Param Sukha. And that's why you know this, uh, these positive emotions like Metta Karuna, Mudita Upeka are called the Brahmaloka, the highest. You know, highest, highest places where our minds can dwell, where we can, we can, we can, we can experience the deep happiness. But also there are the ideas which are far removed from the truth in our mind and those ideas which are far removed from the truth in our mind, they are called ignorance and they, all they, they cause tremendous suffering to us. They give us tremendous unsatisfactoriness to us. So this is a very beautiful explanation on, 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 on Dhamma. What is Dhamma? And we have seen this third aspect of what is Dhamma according to Bhavasambhikar and it's very immediately accessible to us. What is the Dhamma? So what is the Dhamma? To live in Nibbana is Dhamma. So if somebody asks us what is Dhamma, we have a very handy definition, one of the very handy definitions of what is Dhamma is to live in Nibbana and Nibbana has been made accessible by Bhavasambhikar so concretely and so simply for all of us to understand. With this, I will stop here and I will open up our class for the discussions. If anybody would like to comment, add.
Anybody has any? Thank you so much for explaining in such a beautiful way that everything has gone really into the mind and into the heart. And, and the way we have received today, the one, one liner that I have taken is, it's, it, it's for the living, not, not, we are not getting any moksha after death. Yeah, that's beautiful thing that I have, that has touched me a lot.
Yeah, that's, the Dhamma is beautiful and you know, if we, if we can, if we have a way to understand it very clearly, it becomes more beautiful, more profound, more leading to happiness.
True, sir, true. So, sir, on Nibbana and, uh, can, can we have to understand it on, uh, it's in depth, in more, 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 uh, better way? Can we relate in daily, daily routine life kind of things or, uh, live, live examples kind of things?
Yeah, definitely. Because you see this, this tendency of greed, that we are always trying to grab the things. Isn't it? That tendency is never going to, even if we have plenty of the things. But if we have that tendency to grab, to become attached, to neurotically want something, vis a vis the tendency to give. Vis a vis a tendency to share, to care, you know, to be there when, when other people need us. To have that attitude, attitude of respect and reverence towards a fellow human being. So even if we can cultivate in a small way in our day-to-day life, the, the, the joy of giving. Isn't it? We all can give. We, we all have something to give to others. If we don't have money, we can give them, have, you know, the confidence. We can, we can share knowledge. We can share Dhamma. There is so much in us that we, we can share to others. We can share our, or, or, you know, you know, we have some, some, something to share with others. You know, the material objects we can share with other people. That's about it and you know, in the daily life we can practice, you know, the truth. We, we try to know, we try to understand everything as it is. We don't accept anything on its face value. We don't accept anything stupidly. We explore, we want to know, we want to understand, we want to know why certain things happen, why certain thing, certain thing doesn't happen. Means cultivation of prajna. We can repeat the formula that is there in Buddhism. Whatever has the cause of origination, has the cause of dissolution built within. Whatever arises passes away. Reflect on this all the time. That there is nothing independent in our experience. Reflect on it all the time. Is there anything independent in our experiences? Can we find anything in our experiences, body, mind and speech? Where there is, there is some entity which never changes. Why this illusion of constancy? Why do we feel, why do you pursue the word the way it is? Isn't it? So we can, we can, we can, we can, we can apply it in the day-to-day. We can practice Nibbana in our day-to-day life. As Bhavasambhikar has taught very clearly here.
Yeah, it's very much clearly written over here also that Nibbana visible in this life and not merely in the future.
Not, not in the future. And that's accessible to all. If one is, this, one is determined to live a righteous life.
Yes, 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 true. Very best. Thank you, thank you very much.
Welcome. Anybody else?
No, what I meant to say that the lust or the greed is on fire.
Yes.
So we have to control that and follow the eightfold path. That is the way to attain Nibbana.
Yes. See, uh, there is a simile of fire. Yeah, please go on.
Many years back, uh, I had, uh, you know, spotted a banner. Uh, Bhaya Sai Ambhikars Nibbandin, death anniversary.
Right.
Like that they were calling. Means, uh, death, death anniversary means, uh, Nibban can be attained after death only, like that it was sounding. So it is wrong. Means even our people are also ignorant about this. But of course now there may be a change in that. Uh, but earlier I had spotted a banner that Bhaya Sai Ambhikars Nibbandin. Like that.
Right, right.
So, huh, so that, that there was a confusion without studying anything. They simply put the things as per their dreams and fantasies.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So for example, see, uh, this, when, when Bhavasambhikar is quoting here fire sermon, that everything is on fire and the fire cannot be totally extinguished. The total wishing of the fire is Parinibbana. But we need fire to cook. We need fire to get something done.
Ah, yes, yes, that is also.
So you know, it's not that we, we have to be passionate about something. We have to passionate about getting Nibbana. Ah, this is called, you know, Dhammachanda in, in Buddhism. We have to passionate, you have to be passionate to study. We have to have passion, you know, positive passions that are very much possible. You see what I'm getting at?
The use of fire in righteous way.
Yes, we, we have to be able to tame the fire, tame the fire, use it. Use our lives for the betterment of the world. Use our lives to serve others.
Yeah.
Yes, good, 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 Mazanji.
Ah, thank you.
Yeah. Shashank?
Yes, sir. So beautifully, uh, you just elaborated just one second before that, you know, we have to use the fire in, in a positive way and how, uh, we can, you know, use it to serve, serve the people, to help the people, to give the energy. And that was one dilemma running in my mind because in the today's chapter he says that absence of passions, once by Uh, once by the absence of passion, he becomes free and when he's free, he becomes aware that he's free. But here we can definitely, you know, you know, I can say turn, shift this fashion. To, to more something positive, to more something, you know, on the path of righteousness. And that makes the understanding pretty much clear that, you know, people are passionate, you know, in their own intelligence. For example, some, some people have the passion of music, people are passion of, you know, speaking, people are passion of, you know. Uh, writing, you know, they have all these different passion. But if those passions, you know, you know, directed in, in a, in a, in a, in a healthy way, in a spiritual way. Then definitely they are living in a Nibbana life. We can say that. You know, uh, which helps, their passion helps to, you know, bring a great, uh, change in a society and they are like inspired. They giving the energy to the society. I think that kind of a meaning, uh, we can take, uh, by living a passionate life. Uh, so that is wonderful and one beautiful line in this chapter, I really like that, you know, man is unhappy even though he's in midst of plenty. So if, if I, if I like, you know, compare in the today's scenario that lots of people have lot of, lot of, you know. Big lifestyle, they have plenty of money, they have, you know, they are like, you know, millionaire or billionaire. But inside their mind, they are really not happy. They are, they are having certain vacuum in their mind. Their vacuum in their heart and that is something Bhavasa has clearly said that, you know, that even though they have plenty, but. From their heart, it is something is missing in their heart and that's why the people, most of the people are depressed. The most of the people are like, you know, uh, all the time got trapped into negativity, trapped, trapped into the comparison. And not able to come out of the comparison. Oh, this, this guy has a famous personality. I'm not having that famous personality. Even I've had that kind of a money and that kind of a trap they got. And sometimes it's very bad that people not able to control their emotions and they tend to do the suicide. And that is happening in the last couple of years that they're not able to come out of this, uh, depression, not able to come out of this negativity. Uh, so I can say that from this, uh, chapter to, to leave a Nibbana, to leave a life of Nibbana. Is to, you know, to live a life of path of righteousness, to come out of this, you know, negativity, to come out of this, uh. Depressed mind and live a happy life, a live a most positive life. And that is something, uh, it relates today's twenty-first century, I can say.
Good, 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 good. Yeah. Any of you like to say something or, uh? Should we just reflect a bit and close the session? I think, uh, Mahasanghi.
Sir, I just wanted to point out the dismal attendance of the members for, uh, this lecture.
It's okay because you know, we are conducting it on the odd day.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah.
Not to worry because people, our students are going to watch the video.
This, this should, uh, uh, this should go to many people actually. What we are discussing should go to many people. It should not be confined to only few people.
Yeah, so you know, you, I will create a YouTube video and we can.
Yeah, yeah, you hope so. Thanks.
Upload it on our, 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 our YouTube channel. So with this, should we conclude the class today?
Sure, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much for joining and see you next.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.